All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general law, chapter 30, a section 18 of the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or party with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town or the north end of our website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive records or proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in in any public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting or hearing to Gina Enright. Her email address is j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay. Um. Let's start with the bond release Matthews Way, 288 Sutton Street.
All right. So the request is for release of a $10,000 performance bond and remaining roadway bond funds in the amount of $14,300 associated with the five lot definitive subdivision plan approved in July of 2011. The original parcel address for this five lot definitive subdivision was 288 Sutton Street. The notice of decision and as-built plans are included in your packet. This is a private roadway with the homeowners association. The Conservation Commission issued a certificate of compliance for the project back in November of 2018. The Health Department and DPW have no concerns with the final release of bond funds and an updated roadway bond spreadsheet is included in the packet. This this zeros the bond funds down to zero and authorize this release by the DPW.
Okay, any any issues, Gina?
Nope, everything has been completed. It was a fairly narrow roadway with a T turnaround. So John may recall this back in 2011 when it was permitted. One side of the street required no resident parking signs to be installed and those were installed and are still there. So I think everything's in order.
Yeah, I think it's fun and I do remember this one. The only point I would make is that because this is a private roadway, we're releasing all the bond money prior to a town meeting acceptance because there is no town meeting acceptance, but normally we we hold the money until a town meeting acceptance.
Okay, and this was conditioned never to go for acceptance.
Yeah, yeah.
Never to go.
Never to go. So I will make a motion to release all remaining bond funds on 288 Sutton Street Matthews Way.
Motion made by Mr. Simons. Can we get a second, please?
This is Aaron. I'll make a second.
Second by Aaron. All right, let's start with John.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter.
Hi.
Kate.
Yes.
Okay. Three continued public hearings. So I'm going to read my speech again. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, a section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting or may may listen to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public or members of the board or applicants will be allowed, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. If we're unable to do so, we will post to the town and North End or website an audio or video recording, a transcript or other comprehensive record as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate in this public hearing, please email your question or comment to geneenright@j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov and we will respond to it accordingly. That can be done before the meeting, the hearing or during the hearing. Okay, three Grape Pond Road, Lane Finnberry. Application for site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3 and Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North End of a zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes the creative reuse and conversion of the Grange Hall. He also entered through residential units, construction of retaining walls, stormwater management and creation of associated parking spaces. No exterior alterations are proposed. The parcels located within the R3 zoning district. And I believe Kelly is recusing herself from participating in this public hearing. Thank you, Kelly. Gina, can you please give us a rundown of how we got where we are today?
Sure. So the applicant is before the zoning board of appeals for residential adaptive reuse special permit. Should the zoning board of appeals prove that there is a requirement for the applicant to go through cycle and review. The zoning board of appeals opened the hearing, I believe, on November 10th, provided some feedback mostly associated with the narrow aisle widths and the parking configuration. Specifically, two of the proposed parking spaces back out onto Grape Pond Road, and they certainly had concerns about that. And so since then, I believe the applicant has continued each meeting of the ZBA and has not presented revised plans, although indicated that they're working on revising the plans. The planning board opened the hearing on November 24th, 2020. It was opened with no evidence heard because of that November 10th CBA hearing. They requested a continuance. They've requested, I believe, three continuances now, the last of which is until tonight's meeting. So I would ask if Attorney Caffrey is on the line tonight. Attorney Caffrey. All right. So prior to posting the agenda, I reached out to him to ask if there was any new information. The packet includes the original application of butter comments that have come in since then, some department review comments, and the continuances that have been filed to date. And so I did not receive any additional information, and I'm not sure if the applicants are here to present tonight.
Is anyone on the call for the applicant for three Grape Pond Road? Okay, um, well, that doesn't really bode well. Could we maybe see, is Kelly still on the line or is she off the line?
I am on the line.
Do you know if there's any way to get ahold of somebody to at least come and talk to us tonight? My my inclination, and so this is more for your information, Kelly. Maybe we could pass this along. I'm not asking you to comment on it because I know you're accused, but we've had multiple continuances. And Gina, is there any end in sight with the ZBA?
No, as I indicated at the last meeting, which would have been about February 8th or 10th, the Tuesday, the second Tuesday of February, they requested a continuance again because they did not file any material in time for the meeting.
So at the earliest, this will go before the ZBA for their March meeting.
Right.
Meaning not necessarily really coming back to us either end of March or beginning of April, and I'm not really inclined to keep continuing a public hearing with no evidence. So my inclination would be to to have it withdrawn without prejudice. And once the ZBA is done and they have plans and a and and potentially a permit to have a hearing, then it doesn't really make sense to keep this open where the plans are going to change anyway. So what's been presented to us isn't going to be what we're voting on anyway. So it doesn't really make sense to keep it open, but I want to, if there's a reason not to do that, I'd like to hear it. So I don't know if Kelly, if there's a way to get ahold of anybody.
Or if we just. I can, I can reach out to the historical, a couple of members of the Historical Society and see if they have that they're the current owners, see if they have a way of reaching out to them during the meeting. I don't know if I'm, but I can do that now.
Okay, so why don't you, why don't we do, why don't we hold this for a little bit? See if you can get anybody and we'll just come back to it at the end.
This is Aaron. If there's no further action by the applicant, when do we have to make a decision on this?
Do we, I believe we have, is it 60 days from the time? Well, we have till today because it's been continued. We don't have any continuances passed today.
John, you're muted.
Oh, actually, I don't think I don't think we have any necessary.
Yeah, I mean, subdivisions have a pretty strict clock. Special purpose don't.
Right. It's, we have a certain amount of time to open the the meeting once it's filed, but once it's open, we don't have any actual time to 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 which to close it by, unless they're, you know, kind of objecting, but I still don't see the point of keeping it on our agenda over and over again. If there's no information. So why don't we move on to to see what else we got and then we'll come back to that. Okay, uh, new public hearings, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles. Gina, which of these do we have to talk about?
Well, tonight's the night that it actually opens the public.
We're opening off.
Yes, we need to read that again.
Okay, I should record myself doing this and just play that. I don't know why I haven't thought of that in the last year. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, a section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. These, this public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend this public hearing can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this public hearing, members of the public who wish to watch may do so by tuning into Channel 8 on Comcast, Channel 26 on Verizon, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we aren't able to do so, we will post on the town and North Avenue over website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record or proceeding as soon as possible. If during this public hearing someone would like to participate, please email your question or comment either prior to or during the meeting to Gina Enright. Her email address is j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, so we have annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. We have table two summary of dimensional requirements corridor development district two, business four district, downtown overlay district historic mills area. I think that's supposed to be area. It says Aries, God of War, subdistrict A, water protection district and sign by law. So what do we need to talk about?
So you have seen the table two summary of dimensional requirements for the corridor development district to several times up to now. And as well as the business for district proposed amendment to add personal service establishments to the permitted uses. The first one, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Gina, why don't we do, I'm just thinking about it. What, since this is the opening of the public hearing, why don't we do each one individually? I'll ask, I'll ask for a summary, like a really, really brief summary of what they are, and then if we've had any public comment. So why don't we start with summary of dimensional requirement, CDD two?
Okay, so in May 2019, town meeting voted to approve these dimensional amendments per Article 29 to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 16 corridor development district. There should have been a corresponding warrant article to update table two, the summary of dimensional requirements. So this is quite a housekeeping article where the dimensional table now will now reflect what the text reflects within the Article 16.
Okay, and has there been any public comments submitted regarding this article?
There has not, and I've not received any through the course of this. So the legal notice posted a couple of weeks ago, and I've not had any calls we got in the warrant article.
And prior to it becoming an official article, we did have some discussion at the board about whether it made sense to look at the CDD in terms of making some additional substantive changes specifically regarding some drive-through. And we decided that not to do that. So this is strictly a housekeeping article. Okay, any but any members of the board have any comments? Hearing none. Let's move to the next one.
All right. So the next one is the business for district. This article proposes to provide personal service establishments as an additional permitted use within the business for zoning district. You may recall this came from a resident that has a home on Turnpike Street initially looking to rezone that one parcel. The board looked at a little more holistically in your packet. I've included all that information that was submitted to you on the January 5th planning board meeting, and that included all the before parcels in town. It included the location and some of the dimensional criteria associated with them. And so this proposal would be district-wide as opposed for that one individual parcel, and it would allow for personal services. And that allowance would not be by special permit at this time. The board had some brief discussion about that, but we discussed that often when a use changes, it very well likely would trigger a cycle and review. And so we did not condition a special permit at this point.
Okay, so this one is a substantive change to business for districts adding personal service as to one of the permitted uses. As you said, it was spurred by a particular location, but rather than make a single change to a particular location, we decided to make that change district-wide. Has there been any public comment outside of the original, the original person that came to us with the proposal?
I have not received any either during this meeting or since the legal ad was posted.
Okay, does anyone have any comments about the business for district warrant article? Okay. No comments. We'll move to the next one.
Okay, so the next one is the historic mill area, subdistrict A. And this is one that you have not seen to date. And so it was noticed in the legal ad in time and it is included. I've I've suggested it be sponsored by the planning board. This amendment proposes to also add personal service establishments to the subdistrict A bylaw as a permitted use within the downtown overlay historic mill area. The, you may recall, the board in October of 2019 had an application before you for a special permit to allow a barber shop at the West Mill. The reason for the special permit is the bylaw allowed for the plan aboard by special permit to grant a use that you consider of similar nature to the other permitted uses allowed in that district. And so having issued that special permit for a barber shop, the property owner David Steinberg had called me recently because he had more interest in a hair salon. And the hair salon could either go through that process as well, or if we made a substantive change to the bylaw to allow the personal service use, it would, it would not require a special permit each time he had a tenant. And so I suggested to him that to go the route of at least presenting a warrant article to the planning board and see if they'd be receptive to sponsoring it.
Okay, anyone have any initial comments about that idea? We'll go, we'll go, go, starting to go from the other way. Kate, any thoughts on adding personal service to the downtown historic mill area, subdistrict A?
No, no concerns.
Okay, great. Peter?
Uh, no concerns.
Aaron.
No, no concerns.
John?
I'm fine.
And I agree. I mean, as we've seen from kind of now multiple presentations, these large areas with commercial are moving away from, you know, strictly retail and moving towards personal service, especially when we have apartments and things like that. So I think it actually fits very nicely there as a as a added to downtown. So I don't have any concerns either. So I think this is something, Gina, that will be comfortable sponsoring.
Yeah, and I would just add that the East Mill originally back in 2007 or eight was permitted through the planned development district bylaw, and that bylaw allowed personal services. So they've been in existence in the East Mill for quite some time. So I think it's consistent and appropriate to add it as a permitted use.
Great. Okay, water protection district.
All right. Again, I would classify this as somewhat of a housekeeping article. It proposes to make minor edits to the boundaries and zones narrative to make it consistent with both table one and table two, which provides for the the buffer zones in a table format. Minor edits in uses to building requirements, other minor edits to cross references, an inclusion of a diagram one and two to further clarify the watershed protection district buffer zones. And so the table one and two, the narrative for the distances, although it did have some things that needed to be corrected, it mostly referenced lots prior to 1994. In 1994, a bylaw amendment went in that that made it stricter and and greater distances for buffer zones and the narrative was never updated to reflect those. And the other edit that I think is meaningful is the cross-reference previously for the non-discharge zone referenced the same prohibited uses as the non-disturbance zone as opposed to the general zone. And so things that were prohibited in the general zone were not necessarily prohibited in the non-discharge zone, which is a zone more regulated than the general zone. And so there's an edit to reflect that prohibited uses in the general zone will now be prohibited in the non-discharge and thus in the non-disturbance in the conservation zone as well. And Peter, if you, I know you've looked at this for me a couple of times now. So if you have anything to add to that, I'd appreciate it.
I would just add that I have looked at it. And I agree with Gina's description that it's housekeeping and nonetheless it's important to make these corrections and appreciate the addition of the two diagrams, which I think makes the geometry of the zones much clearer.
Great. Thank you both for the work on that. Okay, signed by law. Oh, wow, the sign by law. Fantastic.
Okay, so I had, did not have much time to review this, although it did go to the board of selectmen last night. I'm sorry, the select board last night, and the select board has referred it to the planning board. I will just say that it needs a little bit of work in terms of formatting. But for the most part, what is presented will be in in the same, will be in the draft warrant article. But I do have some cleaning up to do before the next meeting. There in the description, there is a reference that the permitting authority would move from the ZBA to planning board, and I did have discussion with town council today that we're going to go back and put it back how it was. So that's under a section that refers to guidelines. And the planning board is referenced there in in the existing bylaw as they should take these guidelines into consideration when special permits are before them. And that will remain and it will remain for the ZBA as well. And so that's the only, I think, change that will be made to the text. Other than that, it will be really formatting type changes.
Okay, I know that just kind of came in today. So why don't, we still have some time. So why don't we really have people take a look at that this week and have a further discussion next week when people have time to review it. If anyone, and if anyone has any specific comments that they'd like addressed, talk to Gina or talk to Suzanne about about that between now and next week, if you could.
Yeah. And so the article will be sponsored by the select board, but recommendations will be still required by the planning board.
Okay. And what do we have as a timeline for when we would be making our recommendations as a sort of call? Usually we make our recommendations and then we also go to the select board to tell them about some of our recommendations. All of this is before, you know, the warrant coming out in town meeting. So.
Yep. So we we lined up three public hearings so that you could make a recommendation ahead of the board of selectmen having to make their recommendations and have it printed in the warrant in time. In the past couple of years, some of the warrant articles had been before you so many times, kind of like the CDD two in the business for district that you made your recommendations at hearing one or hearing two, not necessarily weighted to the third hearing, but the calendar lays out where you'll have the opportunity to have all three before you make your recommendations.
Okay, so it would be the the second meeting in March that we could make recommendations.
March 16th.
Okay, perfect. That sounds like a great time. Okay. Anybody, anything else on these public hearings?
This is Aaron. I just on the on the sign by law, I know there was, there's been some talk about inserting some language in terms of a, for a larger development, a master plan. And I didn't see that in this draft. And I I'm curious, is that going to make an appearance here or is that something that's going to be considered down the line?
So I haven't heard those comments, but what in the past several years, what has happened is when the historic mill district went in in 2016, that article within the bylaw provides for a master signage plan. The bylaw changes that went in for Amazon allowed for a master signage plan. I know that the working group is considering that for the request development. So those, the master signage plans are all kind of culled out within certain articles as opposed to the sign by law. It doesn't mean it's off the table, Aaron. If you, if you think that's worthy of of looking into, we have a couple of weeks to do that.
No, I just want, I just wanted some clarification on that because I know when the Hillwood, Amazon people came before us that I know John Smolak had mentioned at least on his level that he he thought a master plan, some language regarding having a signage master plan would be helpful, but if for the larger developments, we've, there's already provisions for that. Doesn't seem to be absolutely necessary that we pursue that in in this sign by law at this time.
Well, that Gina, on that, I mean, on Aaron's kind of point, is it worthwhile to have something in the sign by law? And I, again, I haven't really gone through this in depth yet, recognizing that if there is a master plan as part of a separate zoning change, that that takes precedence over the sign by law.
Um, I don't, yeah, I don't think that needs to be called out because the, I think the the separate articles already call that out. But in terms of kind of a comprehensive look, I mean, I agree that the sign by law itself needs a more comprehensive look. I just don't think that it's it's isolated to just adding a master plan type language. And so I think the better strategy may be if the board thinks it's warranted that maybe look at it next year to do a planning perspective of the sign by law. I think Suzanne's focus was more related to a recent Supreme Court case, and she's trying to regulate the signs on private property in a content neutral manner. So most of her edits are really cleaning those type of issues up. So my concern would be we could, we could do something related to sign master plan, but I think it would probably be beneficial to look at at additional changes that would be helpful.
Okay. Okay, so let's continue all of these public hearings until March 2nd. Is that the meeting date?
Yeah.
March 2nd.
Okay.
Okay, trustees of Osgood Hill, David Brown.
Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Well, thank you for having us. I'm also, my colleague Gina Irwin from the trustees is here, as is Tom Dugan. And we just wanted to basically present some highlights of of the report that we sent to you guys. I do have a short slide deck I could present if that's okay. Are you guys okay with that?
The problem with slide decks is that that we can see them and but no members of the public can see them. So you have to be really specific. So unless you really need it, I'd say.
Okay.
It's better not.
No, that's fine. I it's short and I can pretty much just.
We lost your sound, Dave.
How about now? Okay, all right, sorry about that. I'm having some computer issues here. You can hear me now, Aton? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. So I'll get right into it. I don't want to take too much time. So we produced this report, basically a vision for the Stevens Estate and it's posted actually with your agenda today. So anybody who wants to see it in the public can read it. And I'm just going to be summarizing it here for you. The report was generated last September. And, you know, it's really, we wanted to put forth as the people who have been kind of dated, more or less day to day, month to month, you know, viewing the operations of it. We felt it was appropriate to share our thoughts and our vision so that it could be considered as a potential alternative in the event that the RFP that's ongoing right now does not yield a acceptable result, right? There is that possibility. If it yields an acceptable result and everybody's happy with that, then this is just informational. If it doesn't, then this could be quite useful. So some background, right, we are the Trustees of Osgood Hill, a board established by town meeting many years ago to advise residents and policy makers on the management of the estate. Our focus for the property, our focus on the, for the property and residents of North Andover is to, number one, preserve the historic character of the building and the landscapes, expand the active and passive recreation events and learning options for visitors, attract, retain and support some new audiences and fund the necessary operational and capital needs. We produced this report back in September of 2020 and we provided some programmatic options to restore the financial and hence programmatic viability of the Stevens Estate as a recreational cultural attraction in North Andover. And finally, this presentation is, like I said, a summary of the report. And that report was delivered to your board, the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Okay. There's some interesting, there's a lot of information out there about the financial condition of the estate. And some of it, it can be misleading. So again, in our written report, you can see more details here. But it turns out that eight of the past 10 years, this is through 2019 or fiscal 2020, have seen annual revenues exceeding direct operating expenses. So it is not a consistent loser is the point. You know, there's certainly a big deficit now and it's a lot of reasons for that. The COVID-19 restrictions on events and residual impact of a previous moratorium that was placed on revenue generating programs back in calendar 2019. The current estate manager, town employees increased revenue significantly while reducing operating costs on this 100-year-old house and 120-plus acre property. And the estate is profitable and with appropriate leadership support and support. And it has proven over a long period that it actually can be profitable. There are some financial challenges, obviously. The buildings are quite old, they're 75 to 100 years old and there's significant deferred maintenance. And I might also point out, right, that there's multiple buildings on the property. And the estate is set up as a, what's the word I'm looking for? Actually, I was going to have Jean present this part, so I'm going to turn it over to her in a second here. But it's, it's a enterprise fund, that's the word I'm searching for, right? And as an enterprise fund, there's a whole lot of rules it has to follow that are, make it, make it difficult to operate. So with that, let me, let me let Jean present the rest of the financial information. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you, Dave. If I can indulge you just for maybe 10, 15 seconds, I just want to give you a past history of me so you can kind of see the lens that I'm looking through when I look at the Stevens Estate. I've been on the board for just over the year. I have been over 20 years in the public sector, working in the public sector and the public schools. One incapacity, one capacity was working as a Director of Food Services for about 11 years. And then also since more recently, Director of Other Programs and also a Business Manager. So I'm very familiar with public finances and procurement laws and so forth. But before that, I also had 11 years of experience in hospitality and restaurant management. So when I joined, I joined the Stevens Estate for two-fold. One, because I think I have a unique lens that I view through and I can see an opportunity. And I really, I just loved the property as soon as, I just fell in love with the property and I wanted to be involved. So as Dave said, of course, there are fiscal challenges and financial challenges. It is an enterprise fund which operates, which operates under different rules. It's almost supposed to be self-sustaining, but it's allowed to be supplemented by, by the general fund. And, you know, we believe, and I believe in looking deeply into the financials and into the projections and also into many metrics that are coming in currently that we have the ability to view, that this has great, great potential. And, you know, as somebody who's been in hospitality and restaurant management, I can see what can be done. I am not ignorant to the past as far as what the reports were, as far as the maintenance that needs to be kept up. But as you do your own home planning, you don't plan usually to fix your whole house up in one year. You might say, oh, I'm going to put a siding on this year, windows on this year, a roof on this year, and you kind of break it up. So we're not ignorant to that fact, but we believe that it would be self-sustaining and have enough retained earnings, which an enterprise fund is allowed to maintain and retain their own earnings to do that. The estate buildings are about 75 to 100 years old is which Dave, Dave referred to. And significant deferred maintenance, you know, has, has occurred. So it is something that would have to be a multi-year plan in order to repair. Past municipal budgeting practices resulted in excess revenues that were used for indirect charges. Of course, an enterprise fund does allow for indirect charges. It's supposed to be reviewed every year. And I think, you know, some of the things just got lost, some of the rules that they were supposed to abide by got lost. Again, all of these, all of this language and all of the metrics and everything is inside the report that was presented or given to you. The trustees believe that with proper management and focus, Joanna Colantine, right now, there is the, is the manager right now. She is amazing at marketing. She's amazing at what she's, what she can do. It's just she hasn't really been given free rein. And I'm not saying, I'm not going to point fingers to blame whoever, but it's just, you know, whether it's been COVID, the circumstances of COVID, or, you know, prior management and just kind of restrictions that they had on the moratorium. But if you look at her history, she was incredibly profitable. And if I can tell you some of the metrics for this year, it's been phenomenal just so far as far positive 23% inquiries from referrals alone, awards that they won, Wicked Local in Wicked Local with 1.5 million viewers, best wedding venue, and it beat out Crane Estate in Ipswich at Castle Hill. They came in third, we came in first. The potential there is really what I'm trying to get across. Assumptions are based on prior performance, unfortunately. And unfortunately, like I said, we have a few years of prior performance that things that were just extraordinary in the true sense of the word that went against the estate. But I do believe with proper oversight, Joanna and a good support team, which she would have with the board, you know, that we could definitely turn that around. We did supply a supplemental RFP to the one that was given by the Long-Term Planning Committee. Like again, as Dave said, just in the event we get a less desirable or favorable response from the RFP, it's just an alternative so that we could offer, you know, an alternative, which is basically allowing a company to come in and just do catering, but we would retain all the profits and everything. Assumptions based on prior performance also included that, you know, the COVID-19 thing. And if you ask anybody in the hospitality, decimated the hospitality industry has been. So it's across the board, it's not unique to Stevens Estate. And she actually made lemonade out of lemons quite a bit. Just a couple of little things, like there's been a 400% increase in inquiries for the same period, 400% increase in increase for the same time period as last year. 342% of inquiries in the past month compared to the same previous five years. Some of the statistics are really astounding. And I just, I'm passionate about it and I'm passionate about because I think this is a treasure for North Andover. And I think it's, you know, something that we're, you know, losing a little bit of a hold of. And I think it's an opportunity that we have and there's nothing to say, you can't give her two years in and see if she turns it around or, I just wanted to keep it out there as an option. And that was the point of presenting this alternative plan. And Dave, I think I've run way over my time.
Okay, still have audio for me, I hope?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we did have, you know, in our report, there's a retained earnings projection for fiscal 20 through 25, which obviously would slip a little bit to the right, given the extended COVID situation here. But suffice it to say, we believe it can be operated profitably now and with positive retained earnings growth. Now, not a ton of it, right, but, but reasonable amount. That there's still the issue of the other buildings, which, you know, still has to be addressed. I won't spend too much time on that. But, you know, we made these assumptions based on the prior performance of the estate. And we had some assumptions that COVID-19 restrictions would largely be reduced by the summer of 2021 for these projections. So they may slip a little bit to the right if COVID-19 restrictions continue. But there's a lot of outreach strategies that have been developed by the current director and, and we, the trustees, that we think would be very helpful. So again, if the RFP doesn't yield success, something that's, you know, the town accepts, then this is a path we would recommend pursuing. So to wrap up, we were complimenting the Long-Term Advisory Board's recommendations, right? We're providing some options for the town in order to retain management of the state, should it need to. We project, the report projects the financial and programmatic viability going forward and ensures that a historical and critical natural resource remains a public asset. And our vision had consisted of three strategic goals, a financial plan, including some new and expanded service options, cost savings, and some alternative revenue generation opportunities. And we also have a stakeholder outreach plan for both residents and businesses in the Merrimack Valley and beyond. We have three, as I said, primary strategic goals and there's a lot of detail here. So I'm just going to hit the highlights to wrap up. We want to preserve the historic character of the building and the landscapes. That's number one. Number two, expand opportunities for active and passive recreation and learning. And number three, attract, retain and support new audiences. And we feel there's a lot of opportunities there and they're just, we just scratched the surface. And what I would encourage everyone to do, if they have, you know, a little bit of time, check our report out. It's posted, it has the details behind all of the statements that we've just made. And that's, I appreciate, we appreciate, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Great, thank you very much, David and Jean, for doing the work on that. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, let's, next discussion.
Yeah, just, just one sort of word of background and context. Dave and Jean, first of all, again, thank you for your service doing this. It's, I know it's, it's a difficult challenging thing to do, but I think the benefit to the town is pretty substantial from your work and thank you. The CPC has always worked closely with Stevens Estate. So we have, I've heard this presentation before and I think that, I think you're right that it generates directly a positive cash flow. The challenge is to really handle the maintenance and the long-term needs. And, you know, that's, that's the, the challenge. And, but I think you've come up with a lot of good ideas potentially to deal with that. So well done.
Thank you. Thanks.
Great, anyone else? Okay, let's move to Royal Crest.
Yeah, Aton, can I make one other comment?
Yeah, sure, let's do that first. Go, Peter.
Yeah, one of the planning board's, you know, big roles is Special Permit Authority for the watershed area. And I mentioned that just because this board has a responsibility for the watershed. The Stevens Estate occupies a not insignificant portion of the watershed. And that's the kind of thing that would only become a problem if the Stevens Estate didn't continue to exist in some similar format that it has today. So there's, in my view, more at stake here than just the historic nature. And I'm not dismissing it, that's important. But there's much more at stake that involves every single person in the town because it's our drinking water supply. And that estate provides protection for a substantial portion of that area. Thank you.
Great, okay. All right, let's do Royal Crest. Jean, anything new to discuss tonight?
No, tonight the proponents will not be presenting this evening. The fiscal impact analysis is still being reviewed by the town's peer review consultant. It's anticipated that that will be available on the, at the March 2nd planning board meeting. The only items in your packet tonight are a butter comments that have come in since the last meeting in a traffic memorandum submitted by the proponents. I'll carry these items to the March 2nd meeting, should the board have any questions related to those when the proponents are here.
Great, so my intention for everyone's information is to, hopefully, if we have that fiscal impact, to really dig into that, ask questions, get information on when we have that, hopefully for the next date. And then if we've done that, then at the, at the meeting after that, we can really take up the public comments that have come in, questions, and see what we have answers to and see what we still need answers to. So that, that's kind of my thoughts on the plan for the next, at least next two weeks. Yep.
Just a question, please. So there are, there are, I think, important questions in the other comments that have been added to the packet for this meeting. So I just want to make sure that I understand and anybody listening in may also be interested. We will address those questions, but we're going to wait until the next meeting when the applicant is here. Is that correct?
So we can, next meeting, assuming, which is next week, assuming the fiscal impact study is done, I'd really like to focus on that. To the extent that there are questions or comments related to that, we may take them up. But my, my thought was more, take all of the comments and questions that we've gotten so far to date, ones going back and deal with those all together after we've talked about the fiscal impact and asked our questions. Because those, our questions may answer a lot of the questions and comments that have come up and some may still be pending. And I'd like to not necessarily pick and choose which ones at the next meeting. But that would, we can do more than that, but that was my thought.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we pick and choose, but I appreciate you mentioning that. Maybe to be more accurate or precise, I'm just asking for some assurance that these, the questions in these other comments, along with the others, that we will reserve time to address those questions and that they're not going to fall by the wayside.
Yes, yes. I mean, I think it's incumbent on all of us. I'm certainly, that's my position. But I think it's important that everyone keeps mentioning that. But yes, my plan is fiscal impact study, that's our next big one. Once we have that done, then we're going to take up the comments and questions that have come in. Hopefully, some of those will have been answered so that there, it's an easy, it's an easy, you know, time with some of them and some of them are just going to be more, need more in-depth time. But yes, we will have time for all of those.
Okay, good. All right, and that sounds like a reasonable and efficient approach, just making sure that we don't run out of time to address those questions. People have taken the time to, I think, articulate important questions and so we need to address them. Thank you.
Great, and I agree. Okay, so let's go back to our public hearing for Three Gray Pond Road. I see Attorney Cafrey. Still on mute, though.
Good evening, Andrew Cafrey for the applicant, Lainey.
Good evening, Andrew Cafrey for the applicant, uh, Laney Finnberry. I apologize if I'm late to the meeting. I had it scheduled for seven thirty and I believe maybe started earlier than that. Um, we're still not ready to present to the planning board. Additional plans are being prepared, revisions, uh, based on comments by the zoning board. Um, I think those should be ready hopefully in the next week and we're scheduled to be before the zoning board, I believe, on March ninth. And so I would request an extension to the planning board, probably not to the May second meeting, but to your meeting following that, which I believe would be the sixteenth.
Okay, do you, do you firmly suspect that you'll be able to present information at that time? Because if not, I, I'd say withdraw this and let's start over if you can. I guess I'd, well, we can talk about that. I just.
No, I, I, I understand your concerns of the fact that this is drawn on, uh, for so long. But yes, I firmly believe we will be ready by, uh, for the zoning board meeting on March ninth and then the following meeting for you.
Okay, um, members of the board, thoughts on a continuance until March sixteenth? Uh, start on John. What do you think?
Yeah, that's, I, I think one more time, but that's, I, I agree with you that beyond that, the, the notice gets stale and we have to start over.
So I was going to suggest that, John, in terms of the notice, I mean, we could send a courtesy notice to a butters just that the hearing's continuing and we expect evidence presented at the March sixteenth.
I think that would be a really good idea, Jean. All right, Peter?
Yep, I agree with John.
Uh, Kate, jumping around here.
I'm in agreement. That's fine.
Aaron, you good with that?
Good with that.
Okay, but we're going to continue that hearing until March sixteenth, expecting that evidence will be presented at that time, a plan. Uh, otherwise we'll allow it to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Last continuance. Thank you. I appreciate.
No further continuances. You know what, when, when a judge says that, it's really, that means it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right.
Andy, I will send you the continuance form. Please sign it and return it to me for timestamping.
Yes, Jean, thank you very much.
Did the board make a motion to accept that continuance?
Uh, we didn't make a motion, so, uh.
Please do that.
So moved.
Motion made by Kate to accept the continuance until March sixteenth.
Second.
Second in by Peter. Uh, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay. March sixteenth. Thank you for, uh, that, Attorney Cafrey.
Thank you all.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from February second?
So moved.
Motion made by John.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Uh, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Peter?
Aye.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Gene or anyone else, anything left to discuss?
I do not.
I can't believe it's been a year that we've been doing this remotely. I, I thought it would be a month, maybe six weeks.
Yeah.
Kind of crazy. Okay, all right. Well, we are done for today. We get a motion then to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Peter.
Sir, in second.
Uh, John beat you to it. John with the second. All right. Kate, adjourn?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote aye. Aaron?
I will vote aye.
And John?
Aye.
Okay, very good, everyone. Thank you.